I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you mind your honors?
Sure.
Everyone will be following any questions.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you. We thank you for the opportunity to get together tonight to represent this fine city. We pray that you watch over us as we go through our agenda, that we can make decisions on behalf of our citizens that they find appropriate. And dear Lord, we just thank you for the beautiful weather that you've been giving us, the moisture that you've been giving us, that we can enjoy that. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You have a reading and approval minutes from July 18th, please.
Motion for both of the reading and approve is presented.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, my opposed. Thank you. All right, approved of the agenda. Any changes or additions other than moving? We're gonna move Lauren from six B, we're gonna move her up to... First item on the agenda, actually.
Make a motion now, please.
Hey, motion by Weidrich. Second by Pillar, discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. All right. The new five A is Lauren. Come on up, Lauren.
Hi, thank you. So, I just came. We are on the agenda to add to Chalkfest Committee for Street Closure. Board of your heads, that will be occurring on August 17th and 18th. It's a Wednesday and Thursday, right? So, the chalking will begin at around nine o'clock or so on Monday, Thursday, August 17th. And it will go for two days. So, we ask if you bring cones or the barricade. Probably like, right away in the morning. You know, when the guys get on, then we'll just put them. We just...
You're just closing out from the intersection here by the penal stop, let's go on to the stops.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll lay on there the night before.
Okay.
For that, whether you guys want to set off or what.
So, thank you for that. So, you have to do it Wednesday and Thursday. I just wondered, I guess this is a little more me than the committee, but do you think it would be okay to keep the street closed Thursday night till Friday morning? Only because, you know, the chalk might set up a little better and all the art might stay a little more intact if we weren't driving on a runway. I mean, technically, we'll be out of there by, you know, nine o'clock or something on Thursday night. So, I just wondered if we could wait till morning to open it back up. But I don't have any strong feelings. Last year rained anyway, so...
Have your artists mentioned anything about that?
No, no. Yeah, and their stuff is in that paint, you know, so their stuff won't be there longer. But it's just that, you know, the kids like to come back and maybe take a look and...
Well, the barricades are open at nine o'clock that evening anyhow. I don't know what the issue is going through the rest of the evening.
That'd be okay.
Unless anybody else has any other... It's not gonna have an issue with these for fire, so...
Sounds good. So, we got, I think everything on board. We got the park department's been really helpful and the park looks great. The park looks great. Your mom could...
We'll try it one more time before then, and then we'll get to street sweep probably that Monday or Tuesday.
Perfect. It's just beautiful. So, and then I just wanted to ask, does anybody have any questions? Is there anything I can ask about that? Chalkfest, did you notice our little miniature movie screen over there? So, that's what we're gonna be painting, or the artists who are gonna be painting. Semi-permanent mural. So, we thought it would be, instead of all that art just kind of disappearing after the chalkfest, we wanted one piece that would be kind of the lasting memory of the art of the chalkfest. So, that will be kind of backed off all the other things we were thinking about and went to something that's just kind of community-related. And if you want to take a look at this and pass it along, that's the artist concept of what will be painted on that mural over there. That's, I don't know, have you seen it, Dustin?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's eight by twelve. Kind of a hazen-themed. And that, that will stay up as long as it's in good condition, you know? Or maybe next year, if there's another chalkfest, it'll become something different, you know, different. But it will be there for a while. So, we have talked about how if something done with tile and mural. Last year, we had a portrait of Bonnie Johnson on the street. We thought, you know, that was kind of fun to have a portrait. So, we asked the chalk artists, if nothing else, if they want to do a portrait again this year, it might look something like that, or a tile and mural girl. And that's just street art, and that will be, that will be as long as it will be. And then just one other thing about chalk that, and this would come down the road, and it would only come if we end up with a little money. We're gonna spend probably about thirty thousand dollars this year on chalkfest. And that pays for the artists and artists' supplies, for everything that goes into it. The music, we're spending about fifty-three hundred dollars on music for two days. And so, it's a big deal, and we've gotten a lot of very generous donations. And so, most of it is covered. And if we can make a little money on that, me also, that I took over, it'd be good to go. And one other last kind of thing we'd like to do related to the musical play place. We thought it would be great if we could, at least in one place, direct traffic off the biopaths down to the music park. So, we have a little concept for a sign. I did talk to Jason about this a while ago. And it gets kind of hairy when you work with DOT, exactly where signs can be placed and all of that. But we're wondering, and we'll look at this more deeply with you guys, if we have the money left. That's not all expensive. I think it was about four hundred dollars. But we thought about maybe in that triple buffer kind of boulevard between that sidewalk that goes up to the intersection across from Senate. Maybe somewhere along there, in a place where if you're driving from east going west, and maybe making that turn at fast, you'd see what this is. So, I'm just kind of giving you a heads up.
Yeah, and you know, they're gonna be doing that pedestrian underpass project next summer. So, I think we should wait and see what they, because I think they're gonna be tearing out some of that path area.
Okay. And how far the distance goes and stuff, so...
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Well, here, the sign you get out there already is really nice. Very, it's very durable and...
Yeah, 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 I think it's...
Maintenance free, so we move around easily.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy with the truth. So, we are inviting you. Oh, Jerry, did you bring that letter?
I didn't go in to my office.
Oh. I might have a copy. Wait, you don't have to, you don't have to. I'll, I'll just announce it to you that you're all invited to a breakfast at the Park, at the Hutterich Park. Make a little note, eight-thirty a.m., Wednesday, August 17th. So, we're gonna open it with a breakfast for people who have donated, our sponsors and our artists, and we'd show like the city guys to come and meet the artists, you know, hang out.
I'm gonna extend that invitation even earlier than that, Lauren.
Oh, sure.
The evening of the sixteenth, we're gonna be putting up that damn tent. It's forty by twenty, and it's a pain. So, anybody else come help erect that tent? Please.
Not only that, we're putting another twenty-foot addition.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be...
It's gonna be fabulous.
So, there's just, Dustin, that's just the invite to that. But if you want to keep that, maybe so you're reminded to come, we'd love you to come. Let me know if you will come, so we get the right amount of food. I have my tech number on that, if you want to, let me know, or maybe that might be you.
Casey, yeah. I got it, I got it.
Okay, and then I invite the park board to, you know, they're helping with that. Valley Ball. So, I'm... We get to it already.
Okay.
Been a long year and a half of planning. Where do you go?
So, we need to do a motion for the street closure?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close it for the seventeenth through the eighteenth, and then we'll remove the cones and stuff on the morning of the nineteenth.
Okay, all right. Need motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second, my stern discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Great, okay.
Have fun.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Can you understand what you have?
No, sixteenth.
Yeah.
Tent. Getting good at that. All right, moving on. In your report. Jared sent a message. It's not, nothing, there's no pay estimates, correct, Monty?
Correct. None of this all included in here's more engineering. That's in your bills.
Yeah. If you guys haven't driven up there, I suggest you drive up to that tower. It's pretty neat up there. I drove up there two days ago, and it's pretty cool. All right, let's move on to the sale of water treatment plant building. So, this is a topic that's come up a couple times, and I think finally, I think now we're getting a serious look at this from TAN to sell this building. There's numerous issues going along with it. To be honest, I think they're a little bit nervous about the rest of the demo of the concrete and what's in there. Discussions have gone back about this building a couple years from keeping it and selling it, hoping that a business goes in there. Using it as a city shop, extension of our city shop. I've even talked to Monty about moving our police department into there and, you know, having the existing police department building sold as office space. So, there's been a lot of discussion about this. And now, TAN has actually given us an official, this is not an official offer yet, okay? They're very, very interested in this building. I know that it would have to go up for a bid, because you can't just sell it outright, public property. I don't know. I've asked with Pat what kind of stipulations we could put on the sale of this building. If we sell it to TAN, I don't want it to be, I don't want to have oil trucks sitting down there, construction debris and whatnot sitting there, being an eyesore on Main Street. That's the last thing I want, is it to be... We just got rid of a building similar to that on the other end of Main Street. Fortunately, West River did that for us. So, I really am a little bit torn about this. We could save some, we could save about sixty thousand dollars by selling this. If TAN, that's about the dollar amount that they're, they were suggesting that. But it'd be trade basically for work not completed. I don't know. I don't know what your thoughts are. They have held off on demoing this for the last few days. They've got a crew ready to go to continue the demo, but wanted to hold that up so we could discuss it, talk about that in this meeting, so... The area, they, they would put a twelve-foot door on the west side of that and use that lower area as storage and parking. Have you been in that building though? You should really walk down there. It's, it's pretty fascinating. You don't have any pictures? Do you want to? On your computer, but it's, it's huge down underneath there.
Okay, you don't have my personal phone, but I did bring it. We'll get it, we'll get you some.
You know, ultimately, the best, I think the best use of that building would be a business to come in and use it. That'd be, that'd be the perfect thing. But I think that that building is so... What am I trying to say? It's, a, a lot would have to be done inside there to make a specific type of business. We've talked about, you know, food industry type thing, or Buster and I have discussed that a few times, and so has Antoinette, but I think that's a little bit of a pipe dream, you know, and how long do you, how long do you sit on it? No, do we sit on it for a while? Do we tell them to stop this? You know, the demolition?
Do we have any idea what they want to do with it?
No, they want to store stuff in there. You know, if they did that, you know, Pat, can we put, if we, if we were to sell it, can we say, sale on condition of, you know, it cannot, you know, have, I don't know, crap laying around it? You know, I'm better language than that, obviously. Do we make them build an eight-foot fence around the perimeter of it? So, if they do store stuff in there, it's, it's out of sight, but...
Yeah, you can place conditions on sale property. But this one, I guess we'd have to look at the status of it. Since it's currently public property, it might have a little bit different requirements than private sale property, where you couldn't put any restrictions on it. So, it'd take a little to see.
And then my next question then, Pat, is what about the sale of it after that? You know, what if TAN sells it to Casey? And Casey wants to move his vehicles and his other stuff down here, you know? Can that, can that, those conditions follow the sale of that building? I don't know.
Well, we don't have any of that on the other Main Street businesses at this time, do we? Conditions that say that you can't sell it to...
No, but we didn't own any of those businesses either.
Did you?
But yeah, you can extend those if you're able to place the conditions on there. You should be, you should be able to extend them.
Okay. No doubt it'd be contractual, I'm assuming.
Well, it's placed in the deeds of that.
Okay.
You know, we've had sales where property has been set, sold only to be used for art purposes, for example. They're only for religious purposes. So, there, there can be that kind of restructuring.
Okay.
They have to take a, a good look.
All right.
So, if I'm hearing you right, Pat, some homework has to be done before we are really in a position to make a decision to move forward and sell it? So, the direction tonight may be research, what stipulations are tied to this property? What, what the current coding is, or...
I think you can, first of all, discuss whether you want to sell it as opposed to demo.
Sure.
And then, if you do sell it, if you're gonna go through the bid process, what restrictions you might wanna put on there.
Frankly, sixty thousand dollars to, to take that down, to maybe create some parking spots and stuff like that, just seems like an awful lot of money. And that's before you would even start doing any surface work on it, putting asphalt down in lines or any of that kind of stuff. So, I guess I...
So, that sixty grand to tear the building completely?
No, no. The, the building would stay. The shell would stay. The sixty thousand is continuing to finish the work inside, and taking the, the concrete, the three feet below the ground.
Yeah, and to take the...
And the tanks.
Dustin, what it amounts to is on the back of that building, there's, there's that rip and hump there? Well, that, that is, there's a big chamber underneath that used to be a storage reservoir for water.
Eighty by forty.
And basically, the scope of the work was to take it down below surface level, which meant busting all that concrete out of there, filling it all in, and then make it just an earthen flat with the, with the rest of the plain out there.
Is that what they're calling the clear oil?
Yes.
Yes.
And is it still inactive? Can you still fill that from those wells across the street?
All of the wells have been plugged, capped already.
Yeah.
Casey?
You know, on that dollar amount, though, I guess that's not really... I mean, like coming out of, coming out of, I guess... You know, I guess, I guess...
There's, there's one picture.
Our own, I guess, I... Because of cost share, you know?
Right, right.
Right, too, so...
Right, right. Now, we're not saving the entire sixty thousand out of our budget or anything, right?
But is it correct to say that we would eliminate a sixty thousand dollar cost to the project, and then we'd be looking at the sale price?
I, that's not clear. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Because we're not.
Yeah.
And that, and that cost for demolition is based on time and, and...
On materials.
So, that sixty thousand is still an estimate, that's why.
And how thick is that concrete again?
It's bigger, anywhere from ten to twelve inches on the cover.
So, another part of the equation is that they're, and talking to Jared as well, that there could be collateral damage to the city hall building. You know, they're starting to jackhammer and pull that stuff out of there with our, with our concrete building, or our brick building, the foundation, and jade across the alley. And then the house that was flooded, the basement. There's, they're, they're a little nervous about those things as well, and Jared said those are legitimate concerns.
Well, especially the water plant is a block building already with...
Correct, yeah, yeah. Buster?
Has Jared ever talked about what it might become, what it could possibly become in terms of looking at a retro? You know, really in terms of the sixty thousand dollars? My way of thinking is, I don't think that's a lot of money, man. I have to be honest with you, when you look at something like that. I mean, if you're gonna, you're gonna turn around and retrofit that to something else. I haven't been in there since they, since they demoed it. You know, and, and, but structurally, I'm assuming that that main floor and all those, the office area and all of that, that's gotta be, I would, I suspect that's decent. You know, and, I mean, in terms of, of bones, good bones, good solid.
I think it's very solid in there, don't you, Dave?
Yeah, I think it is.
You got those big, two big chambers inside there, too, that's...
Yeah.
It's not just an open room, you know, it's, there's...
I don't know, you know, at one time, you know, there was discussion about, well, maybe we ought to put a hallway in between here and have an extension of our hall over there, being it so close. You know? Because there's, there are times when we have, there could be a need for some overflow. You know, and, and one thing about it is, is like, if you have some, let's say, maybe cater to a more regional kind of event. You know, you could go over there and probably set that up as a meeting site. Then you come back over here for the lunch stuff, you know? Like you often see happen at times. I don't know what kind of demand there would be for that. But the thing about it is, I, I, I don't think we should... I think we should think about it in terms of some of that. Because, you know, that, I mean, structurally, aesthetically, there's nothing wrong with it, in my opinion, and it's on Main Street. So, I think if somehow we could maintain that and use it, we should use it. And, you know, the likelihood of us getting a motel with a conference center in this community, who knows? Who knows what's gonna happen with that? So, I mean, in terms of looking at a little larger venue area for city hall, might not be out of the question. I don't know.
Yeah, I like that outside-the-box thinking, Buster. And maybe HCD wants to buy it.
Well, I, you know, I don't know. I, I guess the thing about it is, we'd have, we'd have to take a closer look at it in terms of... You know, and I, I would certainly need some assistance from some engineers or some designers or something in terms of, because I, I'm not very good at that stuff. Would that other girl tank have to be destroyed?
No, it's not hurting anything, and the way it's built, it'll probably stand for two hundred years, just the way it is.
I'm more inclined to leave that, that clear water, you know? If anything, you cap off that little access hole there.
And just leave it there.
And leave it be. I, I don't believe it's gonna collapse or anything. And if that, if we, in talking with Lauren, if we can just take that out of the contractual obligation for TAN, that demolition, and potentially save the, the city and taxpayers sixty thousand dollars on the project, we don't necessarily have to decide to sell it to TAN or, or anybody at this particular juncture. But, yeah.
Have we ever got an estimate how much the building could possibly be worth?
Is there value on it? We're still paying for it.
We don't have anything valued on it.
You know, I hate to say, yeah, go ahead. It's gonna save us sixty grand when it's actually worth three hundred thousand dollars, you know?
Well, you couldn't build that shell for...
Oh, you know. Fortunately, we didn't have a holiday.
Dave?
If, if a guy was gonna leave that tank, which, just abandon the cap, but the only thing that would be nice would be to do something for a street crew or maintenance side of it, would be maybe if a guy lowered that dirt mound on the back, just to make it easier for grass mowing and that type of stuff.
How much dirt is above the concrete?
Do you know, take your three foot?
I thought it was just a three foot above the...
Three foot or four foot, whatever.
And that was, the concrete would just...
I guess about three or four ounces dirt on top. The way I was told, I was working, was insulating to keep that tank from freezing in the hall. We'd even have a nice strip of dirt off, and we'd use it as a parking lot. You'd never have a vehicle drop through a foot of concrete. What if a guy would cut that mound down? We could eliminate that fence, which would look a lot nicer, would make it way easier for grass mowing and, and maintenance side of it. And just leave the tank where it is.
And just make it rid of the fence and make it easier to move.
Yeah, yeah.
Just getting rid of the fence.
Just getting rid of the fence. But being, you know, towards the outside, it's kind of steep. I mean, somebody could fall off. I mean, you could maybe taper it, shape it different, lower it. You don't need that much dirt. You're not having water in there, so freezing isn't a problem.
So, in terms of the scope there, if we were to just in, in our next construction week tomorrow, talk to TAN about removing the dirt down to a particular level or whatever, and then removing that fence as part of the project, and then calling that good, does that require action from us at the meeting?
Well, I don't even think we need to remove the dirt right now. I think we just gotta look at maybe pausing the, pausing the demo for, for now and... And the rest of the work, yeah. And contractually, maybe TAN is, they're banking on that part of it. And, you know, we're, now we're kind of pulling out of part of the, part of the job.
I don't know. It's pretty clear to me that they, they, a long time have had no interest in doing that demolition, that portion of the demolition.
I think you're right, Mr. Pillar.
I think it's scary as all get old. So, maybe it's just worth a conversation tomorrow, too, to see what the thoughts are on something like that. Not even worrying about selling it at this point, but maybe reducing the scope of work and, like you said, Dave, just leave that, that well portion intact and...
Casey?
So, I guess if we're not gonna do anything with it sometime down the road, all that's gonna have to get, you know, is moved directly next door out, you know? That's not gonna stay there for the rest of the...
I don't see why it'd have, you're gonna move it. I don't...
Well, oh, but I mean, I mean, down the road, though, down the road, though, someone's gonna have to, I guess, clean that up. I mean, if we got the chance right now...
Let's say repurposes.
With that big tank back there, I mean, that's a good slab underneath that dirt. I mean, eventually, someone could build a building over the top of that.
That's, that was my thought, is that you've got a great foundation already in place to extend that building back if you wanted to, to do that, a future owner or...
So, do you think that's a flat slab of concrete there? It's not a dolled thing?
I'm thinking it's just flat, Tim. And it's just dirt over the top. Roy and Dick always go there, they, they're always...
Well, inside, it looks flat, I guess, from the inside, yeah.
If, if that's the case, then I'm surprised that they even built scope into this project to demo it down below the surface.
I think that was...
Leave it a concrete pad, and if you're worried about structure, you can always fill it with mud.
Leave it a concrete pad, and if you're worried about structure, you can always fill it with mud, just like they're doing those, um. And the mine shafts, have a company come in, pump it full of mud, and then you don't have to worry about it being structural anymore.
But being in there, structurally, it looks good walking around in there when I, I mean, Dan was in there.
That's great.
Being in that concrete, I mean, it is.
I guess my recommendation, my recommendation is that the, the only thing we act on is that we, we postpone any additional demo on that. And then in the construction meetings, we can talk a little bit more on understanding physically what's in place there. Knowing that will, would allow us to make a better decision moving forward.
The, the kind of heat system.
Electric?
Yeah.
But the electrical would have to be redone and.
Yeah, it's got, it's got electric and hanging heaters.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
Do you have architectural drives from when that was constructed?
Yeah.
Monty's gone somewhere.
I mean, you should have, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're.
Should show you what the dimensions are and everything.
Yeah, and the elevations.
The elevations especially.
Send a guy out there to show.
And maybe, I don't know how to work with bids, but how do you put something out there and market it? You know, how do we, how do we let people in Fargo and Bismarck and mine, I know this is for sale, if that's something we wanna, wanna eventually do? Maybe there is, maybe there is interest in someone outside our community that's.
I bet. Maybe we do get one to Realtor and go through a Realtor and they can do the marketing and advertising.
And then still put up for bids, you know.
Just say it's up for bids, not up for sale, it's up for bids, but go through a Realtor to do it.
Well, then too, you know, the price of it. The water plant, the last one that looked, you know, you know, there's a big, I guess, loan against it, you know. One more here, what, is that one more here? That's all we got. Oh, so that's only sixty thousand?
About sixty.
I think going in, to my way of thinking, I think it would be advantageous to get somebody in here that knows a little bit about, something about design. Because, you know, I still firmly believe that that could be a nice addition for city hall. You know, it's close enough, you put a walkway in there. And, and, I mean, uh, you gotta, you know, you kinda wanna look down the road and, I mean. I mean, you're gonna be, you'd be giving up a, really a pretty darn nice building, I think, you know, structurally. You know, I don't know what it would take to, you know, to get that all up to speed in terms of where you're at, and I can't remember it.
You should walk in there tomorrow, Buster.
I will, but I, I can't remember if there's a staggered level on floor.
It's all, it's all. It's all one level except for the tanks that were sat up on a lift. I guess one, one lower level with the one pump was that, that was in the lower east corner, yeah, that was actually a step down.
Well, I guess we can hold on to it for a while, but see if we can stop the demolition part and.
Do we have any motion on this?
Well, how do we, how?
Kinda like Dan's idea, basically just table it until we can talk to, talk to them about possibly stopping that.
The main thing that I would go on would do is probably get the rest of the tanks out of there, that would be the biggest.
But yeah, I don't think there's been anything in the water plant. Yeah, I don't think there's been any talk about someone wanting that down, just that big tank, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Clean water storage facility.
Yeah.
So I guess if we're gonna park, I guess, park on top of that tank, is it gonna be, I guess, upgraded for that or?
We have to ask, asking to answer all those questions, yeah.
See if we buy the plans.
Well, yeah, I don't know. Basically, we'd be tableing it until we can talk to the engineers about possibly.
There's nothing to table, really, but we gotta, right? There's nothing to table, so we just, not for, not for our, not for our.
Yeah, if anything, it probably would be a.
To postpone the demolition of that.
Change order.
Well.
Change to the.
Okay.
Contract, it's all.
And I don't think you'd need any type of most. Really interesting now if they come back and say, well, you know, you had that in the scope, we were expecting to get sixty thousand dollars. The tune might change a little bit in the discussion, I don't know, but.
Yeah, but what are their damages?
Right.
How much sort of cost them to make sixty thousand dollars? Fifty-five?
Well, maybe that's something that doesn't, shouldn't be brought to the meeting tomorrow, maybe we need to call Tracy. And have a, have a meeting with Tracy and with Jared.
Well, I think your best bet is tomorrow after the regular construction meeting, visit with the engineers for. Yeah, before.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we discuss or anything else.
Yeah, okay.
Just say for, for, for the time being, we're, we're cooling off on that demolition, we're continuing to have some internal conversation.
I'll be, I'll come down here for the meeting, are you gonna be, do you wanna come down here?
I, I gotta do it from my vehicle, I'm driving to Minnesota tomorrow.
Okay.
I guess one more question is cost share, so what is it?
Sixty, forty, sixty-four.
Hey, can you order discussion on that? Buster, I like your out of the box thinking though, about maybe an extension of our hall and our services.
You have a small, medium?
It'll last long, yeah.
Well, one of the things. Only the things is, and then I'll be quiet, is, is, you know, it's very inconvenient for groups to hold any event in the small hall. Because there's so much traffic that goes through there, using the bathrooms and what have you. And so that would be another venue, rather than you, using the big hall, you could maybe chunk that down and where you could have meetings like that over there.
Even, I agree, Buster, but my, I, I'm being a little bit cynical, but I, even after that's got it over there, it's gonna take a hundred and some thousand or more to. Build up to, to make of what we want.
Well, I, I understand that part of it.
So this, I'm, my.
But, you know, and again, I don't suppose that's, no visit, I'll just be quiet.
But so you can find a grant for us.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe it's national historical society.
No, it's not, yeah, it's not old.
Not that old.
That'd be great little sweat lodge down there, straight up sauna. All right, we're gonna move on. Yeah, something. All right, down to six A, permit for use of other schools.
This is for all the various raffles and bingles throughout the year.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, and street view done. Okay, condemnation of four oh nine, third Street Northwest. Monty?
As I indicated in the notes, is this something you want me to at least send a notice out based on the initial information from Mr. Wies? And see if we can get the access to the interior to do a more thorough thing, kinda get the process rolling even before we're in with Interstate or, or another company.
I don't think it's a bad idea to get some, give a letter to this individual just to get the ball rolling sooner than later, because it seems like the process takes a year anyhow. And no matter what we do, it's, I, I'm, I'm quite actually annoyed with the process. Takes forever, I mean, no, no. Unless everybody has some other thoughts, I think.
I'm not comfortable moving forward on any condemnation until there's some internal inspection done on the.
Correct, correct.
So whether we have Mr. Wies do it or, or if we wait for the relationship to, to grow with Interstate or some outside entity for doing those type of inspections. I guess, because the process takes forever, I don't, I don't care who does it. But if our path forward is gonna be an outside entity doing those type of things, maybe we wait for that to be established and then move forward with this.
I'm not sure, Monty, was that information that you and I have been exchanging onto all the commissioners with the, uh. Process that Moore formally used when they were doing inspections? And then they included a, you know, city ordinance from the.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Well, Moore has provided us a city of tower cities, ordinance on those kinds of buildings. And the thing about our ordinance, or at least the way that it's being implemented by our building inspector, is that. It tends to go immediately from observation to condemnation. And like the tower city ordinance allows for repairs. Is it possible to repair it instead of going immediately to demolition? Because, you know, they have several different levels of, of, after the building inspector looks at it, how you handle the building. And it seems to make a lot more sense to me than.
Well, I mean, but we have that as well, they're supposed to provide us the information on what they're gonna do and.
Yeah, if, and if we make that real clear to them. And I don't know if it needs to be more clear in the organs or, or just in our letters to them.
Probably just our letters would be.
And just say, you know, you need to consult with somebody. I don't think it's up to building inspector to say that this is gonna cost too much to make it habitable.
Right.
That's up to the owner of the building.
Right.
I don't know, it's been a month. And Moore have a good, when they were doing building inspections, they had a very nice letter that was defensible if somebody were to challenge us. And it made a lot more sense to me to use that, and I think Interstate does the same thing over in U.S. Their costs were probably even less than what currently paid for inspection. It's like ninety-five dollars an hour for the inspection, and they said it takes about an hour and a half for a typical inspection. And we're paying, what, two fifty on.
Condemnation will take them longer than an hour and a half, about much longer, yeah.
So it's not, not ridiculous.
It's kinda, yeah, I don't think it's a real cost issue at this point, it's just a matter of comfort with getting somebody that. I mean, I'd get a nice letter instead of a one paragraph email that says this should be condemned, as I looked at the outside of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think, let's not even communicate with the, with the homeowners at this meantime. Let's work on developing that relationship with the entity that we want to do the condemnation type inspections. And then we can, we can work on setting up an appointment, so you've got that entity coming in instead of a mixed bag. Okay, they'll be here on the fifteenth.
Interstable?
Yeah.
Good, all right.
So I guess we're not, we're going with, there's one more, is that what you?
What we talked about at our last meeting was the idea and having some discussion with him on continuing to use him for new construction type. Uh, in inspections and just, just for the, the category of condemnations. Working with an Interstate or, or an entity that kinda sort of specializes in that.
So I guess even if we were to do a letter now, and even if they. Even if the homeowner would say, well, voice on the inside, it's not that bad, which would they, the next show us? And because, I mean, like, based on the prior ones, we just base it off of, I mean, what it looked like on the outside. And the next one, things you were able to see, I guess, like through the window.
He did get access to that other one, on fourth, that, yeah. And that's part of the law too, and when he sent the letter, we requested access to do a thorough review of the property. And then it was no issues to that. That was kinda my thought in bringing these back, was do we send a letter and say, hey, we are considering this based on outside observations? We like the opportunity to, to do a thorough review. If you're willing to let us in, we'll schedule a date and time and go from there. And then come up with, you know, and he can specify, this is an issue, this is an issue, this is an issue, how do you want to address it?
And some cities have gone to the trouble of getting warrants to go in and inspect.
Yeah.
I think your approach is much better.
Well, we could probably. Okay, I'm good with that. So go ahead and send these guys a letter saying, based on the outside observation, we might proceed further and. But my, my only reservation was, you might have Interstate come in and say, in our estimation, this is purely cosmetic. And if they just, you know, slapped some paint on and did some of this type of stuff, not to say that what Mr. Wies did for us doesn't have any merit. But you've got two different entities with, you know, their own opinions.
Yeah.
They might be putting cart before the horse, I don't know. Maybe not, no, I never, I've never stood next to either of these, these buildings too. It looked really bad from the outside, but I've never seen inside of it, right? None of us have, so.
So you write nice letters.
So.
I'll write some nice letters.
So that's the one for, on Third Street, the same thing.
And seven, I would say.
Seven, yeah. Let's see, I have this other one up from Steve Probar's place, well, they just do the garage.
Oh, three ten, four seven, northwest.
Right.
We're still waiting for Mr. Slatton to get in and do our work.
Are we, are we gonna ask the property owner to, if you have, if it's driven by there, it's just a, it's a disaster. There's insulation, there's garbage, there's wood, there's metal laying around.
Afterwards, kinda like when we moved the trailers, I send a letter saying, you have so much time to clean it up. And then after that, we send our guys in and charge them.
Okay, so weeds are this, this tall in the entire property?
Then Norfolk paid to send a letter more than weeds when we're in, you're putting their truck, I'm all done.
Yes and no, it's still gonna, it's gonna be almost a worse mess with, after the track goes in there and with weeds and dirt and just. We'll see a swather to get that run. We need those old Jerry motors that, with the sickles. If you don't like that, Monty? Too many injuries, okay, yeah. Well, those weeds are crazy, I heard. I've had to explain to numerous people this summer that visit our community about these types of properties, and it's embarrassing.
Well, I can tell you, if I lived next to that place and had those weeds right next to me, I'd be absolutely pissed.
If I was Kevin Weiss, I'd be in here every week, every time we have a meeting. Cause I, you have to live right beside it, and it's not fair to those people, I don't.
No, especially if you do a good job of keeping your yard up and spraying weeds and you got four foot weeds right beside yours.
Yeah, emails into that property to. I will quick, I'll get off my soapbox, sorry. Reports, water sewer.
Okay, and the, and the water and sewer areas of town here, several items occurring. We've talked a little bit about each of these things, but now it's coming to fruition and there's going to be some financials associated with it. To, Wednesday of this week, we have Dakota Pump, they are coming to town, they are working on lift stations number one and three, doing the inspections on that. They're also going to do that cable repair. Uh, we've talked about that before, and we, we talked about the financials associated with that, so. They're gonna take a look at some air leak, possibly at station number six as well, and do a repair on that. Then immediately following that, we've got key construction coming to our town on Thursday and Friday this week. They are the ones that we approved a number of meetings earlier at, at around sixteen hundred, or sixteen thousand dollars. They're coming in to do the coatings and refurbishing of the manholes, so they'll be in town. I, I bring these things up because if people are asking, who in the world is doing that? And what's that, what's that project going on, so everybody's aware of that. Uh, tomorrow, in preparation for Dakota Pump coming in, we've got a company called Blackwater Bandits. They come in with their, their super sucker and they, they take down the level. So that the Dakota Pump folks can do their work. And there is going to be a cost associated with the work that they do. They did say that they would recognize the rates that they charged us from last year, which is, which is very admirable. So I'm gonna make a motion for the work that they're doing, it's around twelve hundred dollars to, to do the work that they're going to be doing for us. So I'd make a motion to approve then, Blackwater Bandits coming to town tomorrow to do this prep work at twelve hundred. So I'd make a motion to approve them, Blackwater Bandits, coming to town tomorrow to do this part work at twelve hundred dollars.
Can we, a motion by Pillar? Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern?
Aye.
Weidrich, aye. Home and owner?
Aye.
The last item that I bring to the attention of the board is Pace is scheduled to be here probably within the next couple of weeks here. And they are the outfit that comes in and does camera work within our, our lines. And we've got about twenty-six hundred feet of sewer line, maybe a little bit more than that, to have them do some camera work on to let us know what the conditions of some of the different areas are. So between the per foot costs and their mobilization charge, I'm looking at probably about five thousand dollars for them to come in and do the work. So I'd be making a motion to approve five thousand dollars for Pace to come in and do their camera work in our sewer lines.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. Are they, go ahead. I was gonna ask, I guess, where are.
So, so we've got some lines that, that we had questions on where we seemingly had some luggage and stuff like that. We wanna see if there's anything in there that's causing that luggage to occur. We also have a line over, I don't know what the, what the street is, that.
Is it going up Archie Man, Archie Rose now, Street Fifth?
No, this one here is, we, we've got where Mel Goodnick had a shop over there, there was a question whether or not. Fifth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, yeah. There's a question on whether or not there had been established sewer line to that property. And so they're gonna take a look at that and see if, see if there is a, a point where, where it comes off on there.
Are we going up the, up Fifth, Fifth of.
They tried that last time they were here, but that one property, their house tap sticks too far in the main sewer line, they can't get the camera past that.
Can we come from the other direction?
We don't know where it ends.
Is there a manhole at the top of the hill by Archie's?
But that runs down.
Goes to the south.
Because that's the cement plate, we have, we don't, we don't know where it ends or where it originated. One of the other areas too, that women of Campbell would be like to map of running south. Just to see if there is a line issue too that's helping some of that sewer didn't have that.
Is there still some over on Sixth Avenue or whatever, going down twenty years or?
Yeah, they wanna gamble that. That section there, if I want to chuck those to that intersection and then so check the line that runs under the railroad track. That runs to the lift station.
Are we looking at it all from Senex down towards Tom, Tom's place?
I don't think that was on this.
I just, the reason I ask is we pump that thing out every other week, it seems like, seems like a lot of activity in that, that.
There's just a lot of sand from that.
We're, we're filling that particular manhole in with sediment that comes from the cover wash and stuff like that. So I create some of that.
Dave, what else, Dan? Oh, we have a motion, a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern?
Aye.
Weidrich, aye. Home and owner?
Aye. Street Cemetery, Dave, update?
Oh, we're gonna get ready to start sweeping again, Mike has been trimming some trees. Believe we're pretty much done with the painting. It's right there, we're still cutting grass, whatever. Just kind of related to business.
That was fault?
Yeah, they're working on the patches or whatever, I should be all finished up tomorrow on the patchwork that they were gonna do. Probably work a park erect tomorrow, start getting that log building out of the park up at my school.
Did that fall in on its, on its.
We've pushed it over.
Okay. Somebody had asked me a question, I said, I know that maybe the timing was such that it just fell in by itself.
Yeah, we pushed it, maybe we just see if it would come down and it actually dropped, leave it there.
Okay, good.
Parks and Rec had it tested, there's no asbestos in there. And you leave your summer home pretty soon, right?
Yes, one at the end of this week and one at the end of next week.
And are we listing position or how?
No, it's.
Okay. Finance, bussing, next day. So I guess at the library over there, I guess we got a grant, a wheelchair, wheelchair, I guess, lift on the stairs. I guess that'll probably start here next, I guess, next, I guess, week or two. Installation on that, so.
That's on Main Street, is it?
No, it's inside.
Oh, inside, interior.
To go to the basement?
Yep, yep. The house is all I have, can't think, thank you. Where's your Weidrich?
I got nothing.
Buster? You said you were gonna be quiet, but.
Oh. I moved this chair so I don't. I don't look through anymore, so, all I am gonna talk about is the partners and funding grant. We got word today that our link is live. And so Anthony, Ed and I will be getting that information out by social media. Also, in addition to that, we've got items going to the Pazen Star for printing. We're doing a postcard junket also hitting about seventeen hundred Pazen addresses with that link in there so we can get some good coverage. So, once you get it, take the time to either, it's either gonna be, you'll either have the option to fill it out as a business owner or just a patron, okay? Or I'm sure some could probably fill out both ways, it's probably gonna take, depending on which one you do, probably fifteen to twenty minutes, but so. So set aside some time because the more information we can gather, the better with that. And they're doing a, they, they've done a nice job with putting all the information together, so, very nice job. And we're on target, we're on target with our time program, so that's a good deal. Questions?
Thanks Buster.
Very good.
Uh, just a couple of small items I wanna mention, I'm not sure if you've all seen the, hit the app, Dave's N D app. Very nice, it's, uh, the community events functions, uh.
I like it.
Your phone number, your contacts around there, your emails. So that's the joy of being up, sitting at this table. Uh, school events are on there, it's a, it's a nice app, actually, very well done. Still building it a little bit, I think, yeah, okay. And the other thing, if you get any questions, uh, today I did turn the sprinkler system on at the park over here. It's happened on all summer, um, Mother Nature's done a great job for us. Last summer we turned it on beginning of July and so I, I turned it on so we could get a greened up hook and go up to the chalk fest. But that's all, we'll shut it off again, so. People say, why's the street wet or, well, who's wasting? Just a heads up, I just, tomorrow morning is the first time, it'll happen, Justin, if you launch it. That's all I have. Move me down twelve A. Tire bids.
Yep. That was just being kind of information, just to see the availability on and what the current pricing is. Our tires should be enough to make this winter, probably the summer, but by next fall, I would say, well, voters are gonna need tires.
So when we talked about budget today, that's.
Well, when you were talking budget, I just thought I'd just kind of see where we're gonna be setting on comes to payers and they thought I'd consider at least.
Twenty-nine hundred bucks to ask them right now? No.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollar.
Twenty-five thousand would be for voters.
Didn't you say that they have one set on hand?
I think they have one or two sets on hand and he says, when they sell, that was the two quarter, if he'd have to order them in at that day that he printed this, that's the price difference. It would, it would go from.
Twenty-one six to twenty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty-one six to twenty-five.
And he said, availability. You'll have to be going. Yeah, each of it might be a month to get them, it might be six months, he said, that might be a year. And he said, there's no, no time frame or whatever, I don't know if the guy would wanna buy them and sit on them.
I was gonna say, would it make sense to buy them now and hold, hold up? Buy them next summer?
Exactly, what I was thinking, you can. But it was mainly, I was just all feeling what we're gonna spend, I think last time we bought tires, it was a little over seven thousand dollars. For seven tires for one motor, so maybe throw up over ten thousand for a set. I guess, food for thought was kind of what I was after, I was all looking for prices for a, like a snow blower tube for the Bobcat, then we sold that bad one. I got one off it that gave me a good price, which come back not too bad, but he says, I don't wanna give you one. So let's.
You do still have funds available in your equipment stuff if you wanted to do one set that they have.
Oh, two. On the one set, looks like there's not all that much of a price increase if we were to.
This is, this is the one that we have on the mortgage right now. And have ten thousand, this, this is a snow plus, I, I would have to look at that one, I, I've never seen that tire. But he just, I guess, quoted the two, the two options or the two tread designs that were available. I know the bottom one is what's on the machines came from factory with that tread design, which has been a good tire.
And there's not a lot of change in them, then even if he has to order them, there's only a twelve hundred dollar change.
Change, so it'd be just probably availability.
When you get them.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of money, you, you wanna look at other, other companies, you know, like that tire might not be the only, I even tell.
So some big ones, I could do some checking around, like I say, this was more, well, I'm just for information. So I guess. So I guess, life wide of the machine, I guess, what do we? I looked on the John Deere, that's got a little ten thousand dollar on it. Case, I didn't, that's the, that's the newest one, that's the one that's got the noisy differential on it.
I don't know if that one's a John Deere's, if we're a year away from.
Yeah, if a guy was thinking, if I was thinking of getting rid of it.
They're saving.
You know, put tires on it, but. I could throw a couple for you, I was just getting a price of what a loader would run, just so I has an idea.
The last time we sold our old one for about fifty thousand? And then we still another eighty?
No, I was, it was a little over ninety.
Okay. Big ticket. But we use the crap out of those things. All right, so that's food for thought, thank you, Dave, anything else?
Nope.
It's volunteering, we're not, probably not gonna take any action on this right now. Tree removal bid. Dave, you wanna talk about that tree?
That's over by Westernburg, it is, it is really tall and a lot of the white high up branches, they're, they're big.
Is that whole tree coming on or just?
The whole tree, yeah, it's, all three quarters dead, this year, last year, it was really looking tall.
This is one we talked about before that we tried to maybe save.
I don't, I don't.
No, no, you talked about one of that park.
I took, I took a good look at this one, I would, we could probably get it down, but I guess I wouldn't feel real comfortable with it, I guess. Just for fear of some of the big branches coming down, doing street damage or sidewalk damage.
So the reality here is there, there's no cost to the city, you would, you'd be taking loads of that asphalt and concrete mix out there.
I guess that's what Mike could talk to him about, yeah.
One thing I, I would recommend is maybe getting a quote from T and L also, just to make sure that Turner's is staying honest with us. Seeing four thousand dollars to take that one down seems fairly on the high side to me. Knowing what some of the other big ones they've charged to take down is, wouldn't hurt to see if T and L would give us a quote on it too. Not saying we have to put it out on bids and get a bidding war going on and, but maybe.
T and L's been a tough a bit recently.
But they talked to Monty, they are got a permit to work in the city this year, so. Just to make sure that we're getting a honest price, you know. I do like the fact that it wouldn't, with Turner's, it wouldn't actually come out of our general fund for that, but maybe it's only a two thousand dollar tree instead of a four thousand dollar tree.
Not a bad idea. Monty will be a hold of them.
Maybe they want asphalt too.
Who doesn't?
We've had all kinds of requests.
Yeah, you've got all the B gravel. All right. Approval bill, no, sorry, thirteen, public comment, not here to public, so that's. Approval of bills, please. Move to approve bills. Motion by Stern. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern? Aye. Weidrich?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Home and owner?
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. You can save for the budget part if you want to.